I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is an open meeting of the Seward, Nebraska, governing body, the city of Seward, by the Nebraska Open Means Act in Convex and Business. They copied the Nebraska Open Means Act as displayed on the north wall of this meeting room facility as required. Disclosure of meeting recording process is posted in the meeting room. The participant's signing sheet is available for use by any citizen addressing the council. The presiding shall approach the podium, state your name and address for the clutch record, and ask the limited remarks to five minutes. All remarks shall be directed to the mayor, who shall determine by whom any appropriate response shall be made. The city of Seward deserves the right to adjust the order of items on this agenda if necessary and may elect to take action on any of the items listed. Please call a roll.
Welkin.
Present.
Back. Camphret.
Here.
Fritz.
Here.
Mallor. Singleton.
Here.
Schmidt.
Here.
Hendricks.
Here.
First item this evening are the minutes consideration of approval of draft minutes of January fifteen, twenty nineteen.
Move to approve. Second.
Your motion and second is in discussion. Seeing none, address to your votes. Please display the votes.
Running in favor, Welkin. Camphret. Fritz. Singleton. Schmidt. Hendricks. Special comments.
Our next items two, three, and four is consent agenda. Yes, Chris?
I just want to throw something out there. Greg and I have discussed this in the past as I have had complaints from my neighbors. I'm just curious if any other council members have heard anything. So we're talking about our refuge haulers and the number of refuge haulers we have in the city. I mean Augusta, our street has, every day except Friday and Sunday, we have a garbage truck coming up and down the street. So I don't know what it is from wear and tear on city streets, if it's not that big a deal, but my neighbors have complained and asked why we have so many haulers going through the city. And Greg and I have discussed in the past that we could go out with an RFP and see if there's a hauler who wants to bid out the whole city. Didn't know anybody else's thought process on that. You have anything you want to add, Greg?
I would just say, as I think as, if anyone is interested in further discussing it, then we can put it on as a further agenda item to keep discussing. I do know there are a lot of communities that that's how they handle and then they build through the utility, so.
I think it needs to be in discussion.
We'll bring it back up later just to...
Yeah, we'll add.
Can I add one more on the claims?
Yes.
Just, we got inquiry from Councilman Schmidt while reviewing the claims and we categorized, I believe, a number of them. If you see a bunch of high school seniors and juniors listed in the claims for, you know, claims for seventy-five dollars, sixty dollars. Those were ours, basically, the basketball students that helped out with the basketball program. It's listed as a refund. It's not a refund. It's actually just payment for their time for doing that while the two coaches undertake that program. So we did switch that out and so currently on the version that you guys have live, it's now just listed as an expense. It was categorized correctly in our accounting and budgeting software, but it's just listed as a refund claim. I think there was just some confusion between Adam and Marilyn as they were kind of finalizing that passing. As he keeps coming on and Marilyn went through into retirement and so, but we do do refunds for the other coaches in the other sports like flag football, softball, baseball, soccer. Because those are parent coaches and so we refund back their child's fee if they coach for the season. So there's just a little confusion on that, but we wanted to note it because Councilman Schmidt did catch it.
Any other discussion on items two, three, or four?
Move to approve.
Greg.
Motion and second, Jane, for discussion. Seeing none, address to your votes. Please display the votes.
Running in favor, Welkin. Camphret. Fritz. Singleton. Schmidt. Hendricks. Special comments.
Uh, next item is item number five, public hearing, consideration of ordinance amending Unified Land Development Ordinance. Article four zoning district regulations, attachment one use matrix, reference to body repair use type. And Alyssa, did you want to?
I need to, what's the word?
Abstain?
Abstain.
From the discussion and the vote on this item? Could you have a conflict?
Yes, he's my husband.
Okay. So with that, Greg?
Yes. These are actually flip-flopped in your packet, so I will, I'll direct you to, at least for the draft ordinance, they're flip-flopped. So I would check that as I note looking through my packet here. Uh, so the ordinance we're considering regards to, we had a request, uh, Carrie, in regards to looking to do body repair as we categorize it within the definitions of our ULDO, um, within the central business district. Currently, it's just not allowed at all. And so we went and did our review, both Jake, myself, went and looked at the standard first-class cities that we go look at for what is allowed and not allowed. And I'd say it was probably a fifty-fifty mix, uh, all the way from, a third of them allowed it by right, a third of them allowed it by special use permit, and a third just didn't have it within the central business district. So it wasn't even spread across the board approximately to ten, um, that we look at. And so we had this request. I know Carrie's here tonight, so we can talk more about what they'd like to do. It did go to planning and zoning. It was approved unanimously by allowing it under a special use permit. And thus, we can attach conditions to it so that you can have, you know, no vehicles outside of the premise of the building. I mean, you can attach different conditions to it to make sure it meets certain standards and criteria to be, uh, kind of worked in with how we define our central business district. We also noted in the discussion that we have almost all of our automotive shops are all located in the central business district now. So we're doing a lot of auto repair and things like that in downtown that we don't do other places, so. Jake, do you have anything to add from planning and zoning? I know you covered that.
No, I guess the only concern that we found, um, when looking at other communities was, um, in a central business district or whatever the similar district was in the city or town that we were looking at was just having, uh, cars parked outside of the body repair place that were in disrepair. That was the main concern.
And I'd also just add that that is, in my other job outside of, of here, that one of the issues we do see are when you do have, is the appearance, especially in communities where, and not in this case, but in communities where you may have had a salvage yard or something that would be on the edge of town and then town grows around it and eventually it becomes a concern, but it really is the appearance. And, and this is the opportunity to, to make sure everyone's on the same page moving forward, so there's no surprises down the road as to what's going on or what's allowed that everyone knows. But I'd say most of the issue just comes from, from, um, vehicles that, that would be in really bad shape and, and aren't concealed in any way. They're just sitting out in front of the, of a business, so. But yeah, that'd be the only thing that, along same way with Jake was talking about, that I would just be aware of. I don't think that's the case here, but that's, we're dealing with vehicles that are being repaired. Some can't be repaired, especially with a towing operation, for example. Do the council have any comments or questions about this yet?
Just to, I don't have it open in front of me, but does this change address, Josh, like what you were just talking about? Is since it is in central business, does it deal with, you know, cars at DDB parks so they don't obscure other parking for other businesses? Limit the amount of time they can be parked outside before they're repaired, or does it address any of that?
I would assume, I mean, just during the nature of our parking circumstances in downtown, almost everything is twenty-four, or two-hour parking or twenty-four hour parking.
So the same rules would apply?
The same rules would apply. I think, and, and obviously I'll let the, Carrie, who was kind of the applicant requesting to speak for himself, but I think there's a lot that they're looking to keep internal, so.
Carrie, do you want to come up to the podium?
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, and actually, this is, um, a public hearing, so I'm going to open up the public comment portion of the public hearing. State your name and your address and...
I need to write this down?
Yeah, because at some point. And welcome.
My name's Carrie Hendricks. Uh, I currently have a business at this location. My primary business currently is paintless dent removal, so we don't do any painting or anything. And I, and I'm a mobile business. Prior to this, I've worked with another local body shop that's closed down recently. He's a forty-one-year, forty-one-year business, uh, RNH Body. So when a repair would come in that I couldn't make, uh, because I don't have a paint booth or any of that, I would send it over to Roger. And since he's closed, I've kind of, you know, I got a gap there where I don't know where I'll send these repairs, so. Well, I guess that's why I'm asking to do this, so I could add at least, uh, a paint booth where we could do what we were subletting to Roger. So it's just kind of a continuation of what I was already doing. I just had another outlet that's went away. And, uh, there's no other buildings right now that's available that would meet the zoning requirements for another body shop. And, and this location, we had fast and all, they moved downtown. It's based in available. So that's why I'm asking if it's possible and then I'll move from there. I haven't even made a full decision if I want to take, really take it all the way on, but I need to know if I could. Because for me, I'd just going to require a secretary, you know, full-time guy, and it's going to take a little bit. I would be short-term. If it is successful, I'd like to have it moved out of there in a few years. It's nothing I plan to keep there. It's nothing I really plan to do there at all, just the timing and everything has worked out to where it is a possibility given zoning change.
Any questions?
Yeah. Carrie, would it be a burden at all to ensure that any vehicles that are in, I don't want to say disrepair, but, you know, fenders taken off or something like that, that those not be kept outside at all?
Uh, no, it wouldn't at all.
Okay.
It's very small scale that I'm looking to do. I'm really just trying to add a touch of service. If it's successful, we'll, we'll move it, you know? If we can grow it fast enough, we'll take it somewhere, and that's if I even do it. It's not the easiest thing to do, but it is possible.
Anyone else? All right, thank you. Might call you up though later if there's more questions.
I appreciate it.
Anyone else from the public wish to comment on this item? Seeing no one else, I will close the public comment portion of the public hearing on item number five. Um, any questions or comments from the council on this? Yes?
Just questions. So we, we approve the ordinance change. He applies for a special use that goes to planning again?
Zoning.
And then comes back here.
Yep.
Especially if, if the intent is to be a short-term.
Right.
Doesn't necessarily want to set a lifetime, all right, forever rule, like you use for a few years. Anyone else have any questions or comments on this item? If you do want, if someone does wish to introduce the ordinance, it is of a point of order. We have, uh, five council members and we would need six to suspend the three readings. And so if someone does wish to introduce the ordinance, I would then read the ordinance. It would be the first reading and then we would have to come back in two weeks for the second reading. At that time, the council has sufficient numbers to suspend it, that you could, or you could go again for a third reading two weeks later. So procedurally, that's where we're at.
I'll introduce the ordinance.
An ordinance to amend the municipal code of the city of Seward, chapter four-ten zoning and subdivision. Attachment one, to amend body repair as elicit use upon the use matrix. To repeal all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict to provide for an effective date to provide for publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form. The ordinance has been read by title and designated as ordinance number twenty nineteen dash zero four, and that is the first reading. We'll then move on to the next item. Item number six, this is a public hearing, consideration of ordinance amending the Unified Land Development Ordinance. Article three use types, article four zoning district regulations, attachment one use matrix, and article thirty-one supplemental use regulation in reference to the long-term vehicle storage and RV storage. Greg?
Yes. Uh, as we noted when we got involved with our prior last two requests to look at doing, uh, storage units, RV storage, vehicle storage, there was a large amount of confusion in regards to all of the elements of the ULDO and how they interacted with each other. What required fencing, what did not, what required screening, what did not, what could be outside and what could not. And so based on the recommendation of this body at our last application for one of those, you requested that we go back, do research, make a recommended amendment, uh, take it through planning and zoning, and then bring it back to the city council. And so that's what we have before you're here today. Uh, along with the discussions we've been having with the overarching ULDO amendment that will come with the comp plan that we're finalizing now, this was an element of that, so we already started in the discussion, so we brought that, uh, did a historical view of other first-class cities that we traditionally compared to, that was conducted by Ed, Jake, and myself, and came up with the language we have here after a pretty long and lengthy discussion of planning and zoning. And so, um, the recommendation now is to combine what we use as RV storage, um, and then long-term and short-term vehicle storage into just vehicle storage. So we'll have a singular, uh, defined element within the use matrix. It will only be allowed based on, if you look at page twenty-two of your packet, it will only be allowed by special use permit, which is what we've traditionally done for RV storage in the past. And it will only be allowed within the industrial zoning districts. And it will also have a restriction in regards to its setback, which was a request by, uh, planning and zoning of three hundred feet from the right-of-way of highways fifteen and thirty-four. So that visually, it's not impacting because vehicle storage, this is outdoor storage. So these will be RVs, boats, campers, or just long-term vehicle storage, not salvage yard. Just vehicles that should be operational and, uh, can move on their, under their own power and legally traverse the streets. They'll be back three hundred feet, so they'll be a little bit harder to see. We have a fencing requirement to all storage facilities. We'll have a secure fencing system made from approved materials as we've set forth within the ULDO. And screening all vehicle storage facilities when adjacent to lower-density zoning district shall utilize screening as set forth in article thirty-three. So we're just using our current screening requirements. So if you're sitting next to a residential or maybe a different commercial area that's not industrial and you border on that, then you will have the screening requirements. And that was, again, another request of planning and zoning. So, uh, that's what we've put together. It's all in one now, and we have a few of those details. I believe this was approved unanimously, correct Jake, by planning and zoning?
Any questions or comments from the council? None for right now. I'll go ahead and open up the public comment portion of the public hearing on item number six. Is anyone from the public wish to comment on item number six? Seeing no one wishing to comment, I will close the public comment portion of the public hearing on item number six. Any other questions or comments from the council?
I'll introduce the ordinance.
An ordinance to amend the municipal code of the city of Seward, chapter four-ten zoning and subdivisions. Subdivision articles three and thirty-one and attachment one to remove use types RV storage and vehicle storage short-term. To amend the use type vehicle storage to establish supplemental use regulations related to vehicle storage. To amend vehicle storage as elicit use upon the use matrix. To repeal all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict to provide for an effective date to provide for publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form. The ordinance has been read by title and designated as ordinance number twenty nineteen dash zero five. The title is hereby approved and a motion to dispense with the statutory rule. You have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
You have a motion and a second. Reminder, we need all six council members to vote for this if you, if it's going to be passed. Um, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please address to your votes. Please display the votes.
Running in favor, Welkin. Camphret. Fritz. Singleton. Schmidt. Hendricks. Special comments.
Again, this is ordinance number twenty nineteen dash zero five. Would anyone like to move that this ordinance be passed and adopted and is read?
So move.
Your motion in a second? Is ready for discussion? Seeing none, the question is your ordinance number twenty nineteen dash zero five. It finally passed and adopted. Please address to your votes. Please display the votes.
Running in favor, Welkin. Camphret. Fritz. Singleton. Schmidt. Hendricks. Special comments.
This is the only ordinance for this evening. I need a one final motion to make this ordinance part of the permanent record. You have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
You have a motion and a second. Please address to your votes. Please display the votes.
Running in favor, Welkin. Camphret. Fritz. Singleton. Schmidt. Hendricks. Special comments.
Thank you. Item number seven, this is also a public hearing, consideration of a resolution approving the one-six-year street improvement plan. Jake? Welcome?
Uh, good evening. So Mel and I and Greg got together to put together the one-six-year plan. Uh, obviously, we used last year's kind of the base to get us started from. I've got, uh, hard copies printed out over here on this large board if anyone from the public or anyone else wants to examine and one back there as well. And I'll jump on the computer here and kind of zoom in on a couple of projects that I want to emphasize. I did email out to council the list of projects, so you should have this in your packet. I've also got copies up here if anyone wants to grab one and follow along. So, um, I'll kind of go through the one-year projects and then, um, talk about those a little bit. And I won't hit all the six-year projects. I'll just kind of let you guys see what's there and if you have questions, uh, let me know. So first item, first project on our one-year plan is Carroll K. Boulevard. Uh, this one's been in our one-year plan for a few years now. Just an update on this one. It was intended to be let in February. That has been pushed back, um, to possibly March or April. It is in the right-of-way acquisition phase, but we do intend that, we expect that to be let, uh, in April and built later this year. Uh, the next project is Columbia Avenue. This is an overlay project. Uh, this project was previously in the six-year plan, uh, but due to, uh, some budgeting and what we were able to, to get into this year's budget, we moved this one up because it was a lo, lower-cost project. So we're, we're trying to get it done here in this year. This is an overlay, uh, so it'll be a two-inch mill and two-inch overlay with, um, new curb ramps as well. There'll be some portions that are patched and some curbs that are redone for, for larger turbing radii. Uh, the next item, the next three items have to do with the rail campus. There are several projects going on with the rail campus, uh, one-eighty-eight, which is this project here, north-south road currently known as Pine Street and the east-west road currently known as Aspen Street. These are the projects in red that are in the one-year plan. Uh, these are planned, but won't necessarily happen. Uh, but if they do, they need to be in the one-year plan, otherwise we'd have to amend the one-six-year plan. So they're, they're sort of preemptive, but we're, we're putting them in there just in case they, they happen this year. And we're, we'll be ready, um, if we do.
Jake, just to note what those are for them.
Sure.
That the one-eighty-nine is an entry road that would be designated by NDOT if the rail campus were to have sufficient build-out.
Correct.
At the beginning. Also, uh, one-ninety and...
Yeah, so one-ninety would be the turn lanes.
Yep.
Uh, that is also one of the, um, projects that NDOT has determined is necessary for this access based on potential future traffic projections. Two-oh-one is way down on our six-year plan, but that is a traffic signal. And that would be, need to be installed once traffic, uh, warrants it. So there needs to be a sufficient amount of traffic coming out of the rail campus to warrant a signal. And then two-oh-two, really not displayed, but really it's, it's, it's a widening of this bridge down here to allow for the proper tapers that NDOT, um, would require for most standard tapers. They are allowing us to forego and, um, have basically smaller tapers, uh, in this first base. So that's why we're able to get one-ninety in these turn lanes done without widening the bridge, um, based on NDOT's allowance of us to build those, um, basically under the minimum standard. Any other questions on these? Otherwise, I'll jump to the next project, which is Elm Street. Real small project, but had to note it in the one-year plan. Uh, there's a crossing here on Elm Street for the, the BNSF railroad, and we have a portion of that.
And just on that one, I'll note, BNSF would like to go through and real, uh, raise up the railroad tracks and redo the approach. Because as we know with the issue before, the tracks had sunk and caused the issue with the rough crossing. We came back and Mel's crew went through and milled that down, evened it out, but the tracks are still low. And BNS would like to come back and they're going to raise those tracks up. But to raise those up, it also affects the Elm Street crossing, which is also kind of in bad shape as well. So when they come back through, since that is our specific right-of-way and not the state right-of-way, uh, we would have to help contribute on that on the approach. And so, uh, that is our portion of it, but that connects into the full highway crossing. That's what that, that's what that goes into.
Next project, which is going to be done, um, fairly soon, is right here. Uh, it's not numbered. I need to fix that. But, uh, this is a culvert just south of the Big Blue River and to the west of the, the bridge there. Uh, it is highly eroded and there's not much left of that pseudo-levy on the south side, so that needs to be repaired immediately. And we have, we have, uh, we're getting calls from contractors currently, and that'll be done hopefully this spring.
More clarification on that one because I see some faces.
Where's that at? Like, location-wise?
Uh, it's just after you cross over the Big Blue River on the, on the bridge on your west side. Uh, just after there's basically what's concerned, a farm...
Before that?
South of that.
Okay.
On the other side of the river, the south side of the river, there's basically what is a farm levee.
Got it. Okay, yep.
It's not a, it's not designed to withhold. That's why it has the culvert in it. It's just trying to alleviate water down out of that farmland. It is in the state right-of-way, though. It's owned and controlled by the state and due to our maintenance agreement, we're responsible for maintaining that. And so working through with NDOT and permitting, but it's been there forever, correct Mel?
Yeah, it's been there forever, yeah.
And so, uh, it really kind of got taken to task when we had the big flooding back in August of two years ago.
And I got the permit today that we can go ahead and do that work.
There we go.
And if you look at that, you, when you go by, it'll, it's shocking when you, I mean, it looks like this is kind of blowout, so.
It's pretty bad. I looked at it and immediately started working on the plans to get this thing up. The other project is, uh, Waverly Road and the Hiker Biker Trail. Waverly Road, this has been going on for a couple of years now. Item one-eighty from highway fifteen all the way to Palm Creek. We had a public open house, uh, less than a month ago. Good turnout, lots of comments, uh, more to come on that one. Um, and then our Hiker Biker Trail, which this is a current alignment, um, one-seventy, kind of goes all the way around Seward. Again, this one's been going on for quite some time. The schedule on construction of that is twenty twenty-one.
Just for the trail, the road before that, correct?
Correct. The schedule for construction of the trail is twenty twenty. Or, sorry. Okay, road is twenty.
Got it.
Twenty. The trail is twenty twenty-one.
And then we'll try to milk that in phases so we don't really miss the, the school and stuff, but.
That's all I'm going to really highlight because as you can see, there's a lot listed here that I could go over, but in the interest of time. This is the public hearing and we will adopt this at the next meeting, so there's time to digest this.
Yeah.
How's come we don't have Seward Street on there yet?
Seward Street.
East Seward Street.
We do have East Seward Street on there.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure this...
Yep, so, uh... It's not, we need to explain why it's not in the one-year now.
Sure. We had, uh, East Seward Street, uh, broken up into four total phases. Sure, we had, uh, East Seward Street, uh, broken up into four total phases. Uh, we completed one phase last year and just looking at how we want to complete the next three phases, we did not have enough budget, uh, to fit it into this year's budget, so we decided, um, to push it off and put it in the six year plan, which likely means it will be, um, first up next year and, uh, possibly looking at getting it all done at once.
I I'm just le- leaving that out there because I thought we told them out there that we were gonna do a section a year, so they're gonna be asking questions.
And that's what we were understanding, and that's what I've been telling people as well, so.
Due to the budget constraints, we had Mel's crew complete the portion that they did and we budgeted the next three phases at that amount. But that's not sufficient amounts to have it built out, uh, and dealing with the S curves and things like that with the gradient there. And then also Jake taking a look at the Ridge Run entrance onto that S curve on the north end. We were looking at having him do an engineered design drawing to realign that so that some, as we add Ridge Run four and we continue to see more traffic go through this intersection, along with some of the tree and site issues on the southwest corner. We really want to have a design there that's really safe and it is currently not. And so, we we want to take a look at that and so due to the budget constraints and also wanting to get a nice engineered, because I mean, we didn't have fully engineered drawings for any of this done, we were just gonna go through and put down concrete pavement segments. And so, identifying that safety issue and the budgetary issues, we felt like we would have Jake engineer it this year and then we would try to bid it out and do all of it all the way to the end rather than in segments.
So instead of taking four years, right, a segment for each year, we're gonna try and do.
We did the first, so it'll, we'll end up being three years total rather than a four year project, but we'll have it engineered and then we'll work with the community down there to come up with a design on that intersection that really promotes safety, but at the same time, it's something that people can live with. So, that's kind of the goal that Jake's working through right now. And then, for budgetary purposes, North Columbia and the huge amount of traffic that's traveling on that and the wear and tear that that road was taking, those two were just swapped for this year because they fit with the budget, so.
Do you have any ways to fix what is going on then with East Seward Street as you get out into the D section around Evergreen? It's getting to the point where it's gone.
That's kind of.
No, 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 the D section is ours.
Oh, it is?
Yes.
Yeah, there's four houses and five houses that are still on.
Mel, Mel has stressed to us the concern with that, the problem is that segment, just due to its length, is far longer than the segment that Mel did this past summer, and so budget, we only put in enough to cover certain segments and so we couldn't do that segment this year because we weren't planning on it, it's just too long, correct Jake?
Correct.
No, just for the, uh, uh, so we'll, some kind of short term.
Yeah, we're just gonna continue to have to do some, like. We're just gonna have to maintain it really hard for the next year, uh, and then go in there and rebuild out and be done with it uh, in the next construction season and be done, so. But it is, it's in very bad, the other element that's part of the discussion and I'll note, we have our county commissioner here, but is also looking at, and and in our future comp plan and everything else, looking at East Seward off into the county after that too. What our future plans are for development south of there, uh, we already have a number of residents and stuff that live along East Seward there. They utilize utilities, uh, in some way, shape or form, and so the discussion of any annex or, um, you know, use it to be Seward all the way up, potentially to Highway thirty four. I know we've discussed that with with Becky before, when we got together with her about a year ago, uh, because that section is really in rough shape too. So. And I don't know, I don't want to speak for the county, but I don't know that they have any plans to do anything specific with that at this point in their roads project. Other than minimal maintenance, like we are.
Any questions, Jake? Again, this is a public hearing, this is item number seven, we've opened up the public comment portion of the public hearing. If anyone from the public would like to comment on item number seven. One at a time, please. Same going on, then I'll go ahead and close the public comment portion of the public hearing. Does the council have any other questions or comments on this item? I understand there's no action for it tonight, correct?
This is just making us aware of this, right?
Yeah, we usually have the public hearing at one meeting and then actually adopt it at the next meeting. So if we hear things at the public hearing, we want to incorporate, we adopt it, we have time to to adopt it.
So what I'll do is unless there's any other questions or comments, we can go on to the next item. I don't want to rush anybody if you have any questions, comments, concerns, your thoughts. If not, then I'll move on then to item number eight. Consideration of a special limited liquor license for Macca Vica Winery for an event on March ninth, twenty nineteen at Harvest Hall sixteen twenty five Fairground Circle.
Um, this is the first request for an S D L from Macca Vica Winery and for our ordinance, those need to come to city council. Um, I don't see any concerns with it.
Any questions or comments from the council?
Move forward.
Second.
We have a motion and a second and any further discussion, same done, be ready for your votes, be ready for the votes.
On your favorite, welcome, campus, for it, Singleton Schmidt Hendricks.
And I, item number nine, acknowledge receipt of claim from Alejandro Garcia, eight twenty one, North Fifth Street for personal property damage and forward to city attorney and the city's insurance carrier, Greg?
Uh, sewage backup claim, I believe, uh, just kind of our standard procedure, recommend me moving along to the city and attorney for disposition or the insurance for disposition.
Questions or comments? Any questions or, are we good?
I think to approve the acknowledgement.
We have a motion to approve, you have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second?
Just you're you're acknowledging the claim and before you get on to insurance.
Yes. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, yes, we have a motion to acknowledge receipt of claim and to forward it on to the city attorney and the city's insurance carrier. We have a second on that motion, any further discussion? Same done, be ready for your votes, be ready for the votes. It's library time, Becky Baker, welcome.
You received the annual report in your packet. We celebrated fifteen years in our new library building master, which is hard for all of us to believe, so. Uh, shared some pictures from some of our favorite programs, some graphics, uh, numbers and a ten year comparison sheet, which was, so. I gave you candy and a couple of souvenirs from our fifteenth anniversary that the friends of Sir Library provided for those who attended the events. So, use them as you see fit. And we'll just here to answer questions if you have any.
Any questions, comments? Really do appreciate everything that the library does, we think it performs a much needed service to the community. It's one of the very few, uh, services that we can provide that is for people of all ages and and really does, uh, address the needs of of all, all the citizens of Seward as well as outside of the city as well. So we just appreciate all that you do in the library.
Pass it on to the staff who deserve it.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
And candy helps.
I don't always.
Jake's, the point would have gone way smoother if he was candy, but here and there.
Or that's the next time.
What's that? Okay, we're doing, you accept the, should we accept the report, does it matter?
Sure.
Like to accept the report, is there a motion to accept the report?
So many.
Second.
Motion and a second, be ready for your votes, be ready for the votes. Item eleven, presentation by Blue Stem Energy on managing the sale of renewable energy certificates, R E C, Greg?
Yeah, I, uh, put in some information in regards to, uh, R E Cs, otherwise known as renewable energy certificates. Uh, we, um, due to our power purchase agreement on the Blue Stem Energy Wind Project located west of town, uh, we are able to utilize ninety-five percent of the R E Cs generated by, uh, that project. Thus, uh, there is a market of people that if they want to have certified renewable energy businesses or things like that, will be able to purchase this on the market. Uh, one of the things that Blue Stem Energy does and and we'll, we'll speak to it, is that they do broker those for almost all of their other clients that they have energy projects with and so, they've approached me about coming to you and seeing if that would be something we're interested in, so.
Yeah, so this thing you have in front of you, I'm gonna get to it in a second.
Well, just for the record, identify yourself.
Oh yeah, Will Crane, uh, Blue Stem Energy Solutions, I live along, uh, in case you haven't. Um, so, yeah, what I, what I passed out, I'm gonna get to that in a minute, it's really just an example, these aren't hard numbers. Uh, it's just meant to show essentially how it would work. But, uh, with your guys' turbine, uh, like Greg said, you guys own ninety-five percent of the renewable energy credits that are created, uh, because of it. And they do have value, um, each one, um, usually we see them trade for about thirty to eighty cents, kind of depending on the year, depending on what the market's like. Uh, it fluctuates constantly, um, so they they do have a little bit of value, uh, by themselves, pretty small, but when you put them together, they 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 do add up. So, um, right now, I think you guys have a little over five thousand, um, and you have a couple of options really. One, you can retire them yourselves, um, and essentially claim that you are using a hundred percent of the renewable energy that is coming out of the turbine. Uh, another option, and this is something that we have seen done in the past, and I think the city has seen this, was they donated a portion of them to a local uh, university or business or something like that, um, where they were then able to claim that, yes, we are using, uh, X percent of uh, hard energy is coming from this renewable energy. It's really a paper transaction, um, it's, uh, it's it's pretty much a name, the electrons don't have to be certified, but they're going there. Um, it was originally created really to be a kind of a, another subsidy for these projects. So, um, essentially what we are, something that we offer is we will, uh, sell these R E Cs for you guys um, and we take a fee, take a twenty percent fee, um, and when you do sell these, um, you have to register them uh, with the North American Registration, uh, Renewable Energy Registration. And to do that, uh, there's a five hundred dollar, uh, fee per year for them. Uh, so that is now a Blue Stem fee, that would be the registration fee and that is basically to make these credits eligible, um, to sell into the market. Um, so, uh, what we would do essentially is take that five hundred out of, uh, whatever amount that you guys are selling and whatever value that has, um, and then there's also an additional one cent fee per R E C. Um, that is, that is also incurred, um, in the transaction. So, those two would just get pulled out, um, and then after we were able to essentially find the best place, um, to sell these R E Cs, we would, uh, write you guys a check, uh, for the remaining amount minus that twenty percent that we take um, and then that five hundred dollars standard registration fee and the one cent per R E C. So, what you have in front of you is really just a breakdown of how that all works out, it's pretty simple, pretty straightforward. Either way, uh, we we do do this for a lot of our customers, it's something that they, uh, it's it's just a kind of an easy way for them to, uh, get a little bit more value out of these projects. And, yeah, I mean, that's that's pretty much it, uh, I, if you have any questions, it'd be more than happy to figure.
Yeah, I have a real quick question and then we get, just counsel, I'm, I'm trying to understand, like, after the fees and everything, I mean, at some point, it almost seems like a donation to an entity that would benefit from this more than we're really going to realize might make sense because, but, I mean, if we're feed to death to the point where it's, now we're down to, we start out with four thousand, we end up with about twenty-six hundred, I mean, I almost would wonder if, wha- what's the expense, let's say, I only use Concordia University because they're the only university we have.
Sure.
But we use them as an example, if they were to receive these, assuming they want them, what is the benefit to them?
Yeah, I mean, to be honest, it's it's mainly marketing, uh, so a good example of this, uh, Whole Foods buys a lot of R E Cs um, for their three sixty, for their, uh, kind of their like generic brand, um, and when they buy these, they can claim, hey, this, uh, box of crackers, um, like, was was utilizing renewable energy, uh.
On paper.
On paper, exactly, it's not a.
This is something, such a scam.
It's, yeah, I mean, I mean, at the end of the day.
Is scam too hard, is that too hard, Jake?
No, you can do this on civil projects as well, uh, there's something similar with wetlands, you're disturbing wetlands, you can buy banked wetlands somewhere else and just say, hey, we we bought.
On paper, we just turn it into a commodity, we just offset it on paper, but we really didn't offset it.
And I'll say this too, I mean, I mean.
Somebody else did.
You can, you can, by all means, sell these on your own, you don't have to use Blue Stem and then you refer go to that twenty percent brokerage fee. Um, you would still have to pay the five hundred dollar fee to register it with the national organization and you would still have to do that one cent fee per R E C.
Do these expire?
Uh, no, they don't, um, not until we retire them.
It's the worst case scenario, we could just sit on them and bank on them.
Sure.
And then we'll forget about them and then in like three hundred years, someone will find this piece of paper and realize we're sitting on, you know, twenty-three hundred dollars.
Maybe.
If, uh, if market permitting, um, so, Sydney the question, right, and then Chris has a question? Got a comment?
My question is, and I used to know all this, because we used to do a lot of work in this industry, but, um, that registration fee, who is that organization and are they the government or are they just a private corporation? Who gets that five hundred dollars?
Yeah, it's, so it's the North American, uh, Renewable Credit Registration.
Which is what?
Yeah, it's a political something, basically, yeah.
You can buy stars for them.
Buy what?
Sorry.
Other than what you want the stars on?
International Stars.
Or the name stars?
A star.
Yeah, you get name stars, that's them? I'm on board with that, it is, I'm not sure about it, Chris?
So, I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
If I'm Concordia, how many of these R E Cs do I have to buy?
Yeah, great question.
How does that process go?
Great question, so typically what you would do, uh, the way a R E C is measured is in megawatt hours. So, when that turbine's spinning, every time it created, creates, uh, one megawatt hour, one R E C is created. Um, and the way you re- you basically realize that is off off the invoice, you, it'll let you know how many megawatt hours have been created. Um, so, what Concordia would do is they would look at their electric usage and they would say, okay, over the course of the year, we use X amount of megawatt hours. Um, and if they said, okay, we want to be a hundred percent renewable, they would look at, okay, we used a thousand megawatt hours this year, that number doesn't mean anything, it's just an example. Um, but they would say, okay, so to offset that thousand megawatt hours that we use this year, we would have to purchase one thousand R E Cs. Or they would have to, uh, be donated one thousand R E Cs, they'd have to come into, uh, ownership of a thousand R E Cs essentially, um, and and that's how they would do it.
Question two, how's the price set? You you gave us a thirty cent range to an eighty some cent range.
I mean, it's a market, so it is purely on what people are willing to pay for them. So it cha- it fluctuates all the time, it's exactly like the stock market.
So does any decision by Congress change the price of these?
Uh, it might have an influence, but it doesn't technically change the price.
So really, the more renewable energy we produce, the lower, we flood the market with R E Cs, then we end up dropping the price of the R E Cs?
In theory, that's would be how it would work and, yeah, I mean, as you see more, especially large wind farms come on, um, it has driven down the price of R E Cs, absolutely.
Right, okay.
So, yeah.
It's like OPEC, but way less lucrative.
So essentially, we're feeding these megawatts back into our grid, they go out to everyone, there's no way to measure that. But if I want to say, hey, I I want to get on the tree hunter side of the world, I'm gonna get myself certified that I'm using all renewable energy and I have to buy that to do that.
Yeah.
Because we generate the renewables, so they're basically buying our experience.
Exactly.
It's a good experience. Okay, well.
It's a bit of data, it's a bit of data, that's really worth it.
It's all amazing.
But they're valued to it, so, I mean, it's worth it.
Does the council, council have any thoughts on this? So do we have to make a de- decision to move with somebody or can we sit and wait until somebody comes to us and says, I want to buy your R E Cs?
No, I mean, you could certainly wait until somebody says, I want to come buy your R E Cs. Um, I would say that most people probably aren't, um, going to be going out and soliciting you for them. I I I don't think that's very common, typically, um, you'll just like, there's there's an online marketplace, uh.
But it might make sense if the council wanted to sell us for, for the time being and maybe get a better sense of of where they'd best be be utilized, whether it is a Concordia.
Yeah.
Or whether there is another entity business in in the community, if, or if you decide you wanted to cash them in as well. But there's no rush on this, it's not like this is at an all time high in the market right now, in fact, let's say at the low, at the low end of the market, right? But there's no rush on this, it's not like this is at an all time high in the market right now, in fact, it's at the low, at the low end of the market, right?
Yeah, there's, I mean, I wouldn't say there's any rush at all.
Yeah, so that would be, I guess, my suggestion, unless someone feels really strong about emptying their portfolio of REX.
I, I think we belong to them, I mean, I, I, there's gonna be a market for it, I mean, I put myself in the tree hugger side of the world because we do as much recycling and everything else as we can. And just like we became a certified city for this or that, somebody's gonna wanna certify themselves in this. And at some point, uh, rather than making two grand off of selling these, we might be able to make a little more money for that.
I'd just follow up with, well, uh, in talking to Mitch at Blue Stem when he approached us, just reminding us. And they, they're doing this solely out of trying to just keep us up to date on what's going on and what we have. They're not pushing us, this is not something they're trying to shove us into so they can make money. It's simply something that they provide their other power purchase, uh, partners with. Um, there's no specific agreement with them, cause I did ask, they don't have a written agreement, it's something they just provide through their power purchase. So at a later time, if we would go, eh, no one's clamoring for these, we let Blue Stem know if they're still providing the, the, uh, the service. They said they would gladly do it for us, and so if it's something that we don't feel that we could go out and get into the market of and, and it's kind of above our pay scale, I think.
So is, is Blue Stem somehow a registered broker of these and so people come to you looking for them or?
No, so we are actually not a registered broker, so we would go through a registered broker, um, at, at the time when we decide, okay, we wanna sell these REX, then we would go through a registered broker, because we are not.
Can I ask you a extremely rude question?
Sure.
Could we go directly through a registered broker?
Yeah, of course, of course.
And would, how does that change this?
It, it doesn't, I mean, you'd still, you'd only, you would cut out our, the, the fee that we take, you would cut that out. And then you would still pay the rec registration fee and the per, that one cent per rec fee, but yeah, you could, you're.
But the broker, do they have their own percentage that they take?
Absolutely.
And what is, is that?
It depends on the.
Okay.
He did what defaults that to you. I agree with your senior.
I was on a roll, I thought maybe he just foiled, foiled again.
If, as Josh said, if we would decide in the future to sell them, where do they exist, like, how, how do we even know, other than what you're telling us, how many we have?
Sure, so, I mean, we keep track, I mean, we have, uh, we keep track of them, so we know exactly how many megawatt hours have been produced.
It was basically from the generation record.
Exactly, exactly, that's where it gets drawn from.
And as we stated before, we split them, ninety-five percent go to the city, five percent already go back to Blue Stem. So they have to keep track of anyways to know their portion.
I guess the real question would be then, like, if, instead of just curious about what the current market unit price is.
Yeah.
Where's that listed at, where do you find that at?
So, uh, it's kind of tough, I get emails about it, to be honest, um, I, I, I get them from brokerage firms, so they'll go out.
But, but like, is there like an exchange somewhere that is, that is publicly kept?
There is, it's called Green E, um, you can go onto their website and I think you have to make a login and something, then you should be able to do it, yeah.
Okay, and then I'll just show you, just like looking at the Dow Jones, it would, it shows it is.